It's 6:30. We're going to call the meeting to order. If you will join us in the pledge and the invocation, the invocation be led by Alderman Ross.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please join me in the invocation? Father God, you are the source of all good things, and in this season of Thanksgiving, it is only right that we extend our thanks to you. You give us each day our daily bread, our many gifts and talents, and the leaders who govern and influence the lives we live. We thank you for our opportunities to serve, as well as the service of our many neighbors who answer your call on such a regular basis. Father, we remain a challenged people. Persons on many sides strike out at others in hatred, fear, misunderstanding, and by mistake. And the consequences can be life-changing and even life-ending. Life-ending hatred happened on Sunday in a neighboring community as a San Antonio police officer sat in his vehicle, performing routine tasks, and internally and externally fomented hatred cut short his life. He was a loved-one father, friend, and public servant. As a community, we extend our prayers to you for his friends, family, and coworkers. As we pray and listen for your word, we ask that you hold fast to the family and friends of the area, state, and national police officers felled by the hatred of persons separated from you. And we ask that you continue to protect community, area, state, and national police officers. On days like this, we writhe in anguish with loss, and we turn to you for what we need in such trying times. Please comfort us. This evening, we call on you to share with the many public servants here this evening your patience, wisdom, and judgment on each of the items before us. May our thoughts, words, and deeds be only those that you would have us pursue. Please continue to protect, preserve, and prosper our community, state, and nation. Amen. Okay, item three, there are no citizens to be heard. Item four, council member comments. Alan.
I'm still waiting for citizens to be heard. I just want to say welcome to everybody, and given the week it is, have a great Thanksgiving, and again, thank you.
Mary Ann. Good evening. Thanks so much for coming out, and I'll echo Alan. Happy Thanksgiving. Eat a lot. I'm going to.
Michelle.
Ditto.
Okay, great. Brings us to item 5.1. Presentations, commendations, and announcements. The first is a proclamation concerning the rain garden. And I'm looking. This last, within the last two weeks, I guess, Brandon, if that's right, two weeks ago, we worked to put together a rain garden here at the city hall. We had a great citizen participation, and it never could have happened without Annalise and Debbie. Y'all did an absolutely amazing job, and Debbie's not, well, Annalise and Debbie are not here, so. The citizens who participated, Jessica and Nicole Lehman from wagon trail, Jesse and Sam Backy off of Cliffside, I don't know where Sam and Paula Peters live, Anna Marie Stern, Jana Gibbs, Gibbons, M.J. Smoot, Annalisa Martinez, Annalise Peace, Debbie Reed, and Mary Warner. And I want to commend all of them for their very hard work, and also Brandon and all of his crew. They did a great job of site participation. I encourage each one of you during the daytime hours to come along the west side of the city hall and look at the rain garden that has been put in place. It's absolutely amazing. We have some proclamations for the people here concerning the rain garden project, and I will dispense with reading those, and I will forward them on to the organization who sponsored the event. The next item is the recognition of Corporal Villanueva for his actions on November the 8th, 2016. Chief, would you come forward with Officer Villanueva?
Honorable mayor and members of the council, citizens, I want to introduce to you Corporal Jaime Villanueva. Jaime has been with the Chavino Police Department for two and a half years after serving nine and a half years with the Bear County Sheriff's Office. So he is not a brand-new policeman, he's just been here two and a half years. During the two and a half years he's been here, he's done some pretty remarkable police work. He's demonstrated a very proactive attitude on the streets, he self-initiates a lot of his own work, and that's resulted in the apprehension of several criminals out there. Quickly, the most notably thing, and the reason we're bringing this to light tonight, is in the early morning hours of November 9th, when he was working his shift from 6:00 PM November 8th to 6:00 AM November 9th, it was about 3:00 in the morning, and it was raining, and Corporal Villanueva was driving on patrol in the 600 block of Happy Trail when he observed a vehicle parked in the roadway. And we all know that that's a violation of a city ordinance. It was also too far in the street, it was sort of parked too far out, over 18 inches from the curb is what we would say. So he goes to make contact with it and notices that there's some people in the car. They go to pull off, he jumps back in, pulls them over, gets to talking to them, interviewing them, and he discovers from the work he did that these two ladies in the car were involved in burglarizing vehicles, and that there was a third person, a male subject, that they told him was still in the neighborhood, the guy that was doing all the thefts. So he detained the two ladies, got some more officers up there, the two ladies were headed to jail, he and another officer, in the rain, start walking the streets on foot, looking for this person. And they spent most of the rest of the night trying to find this guy. Unfortunately, they did not locate him, but we knew who he was from the work that the officer did. And we have placed this individual in jail, he's in the Bear County Jail, and we're filing criminal cases on all three of them. And none of that would have been possible without the proactive work that Officer Villanueva did that night. This isn't the first time this has been something he's done. He's been instrumental in identifying a group of home burglars in 2014, burglary of vehicle cases in 2015 and 2016, including interrupting some car burglars at Pozanos earlier this year that resulted in the identification of two suspects from the crimes up there. And while on a police bike, riding around at night, they located another group that were breaking out windows. So he was out on one of our police bicycles one night. In 2015, he was selected by the officers to be the Officer of the Year for the department. So for his outstanding performance for duty and professional service, we're awarding Corporal Jaime Villanueva the Chief's Award of Excellence tonight.
Chavino Park is one of the unique communities where it's not uncommon for us to look out the window and see a police officer driving by our homes every hour, two hours a day, 365 days a year. And that makes for a different type of community policing than you find in other communities. In the last few years in Chavino Park, we've had around seven break-ins, including the Pozanos series of break-ins, where there are different collections of people who've been participating in these events. And in that period of time, I believe this is now the fourth series of car burglaries that we have caught. You don't catch four out of seven sets of burglars on vehicles ever in the community. And our entire police department, but particularly Officer Villanueva, are worthy of our recognition and our thanks. So when you see a police officer, please wave him down and extend your thanks, particularly in this period of Thanksgiving. Thank you, Officer.
He gets a recognition, and he got the little cool set of pins. Okay, the next, I'd like to recognize our Bear County election judges. We're going to be sending a letter to your supervisor, Jackie Callahan, the elections administrator, on your behalf. Gwen, Don, I'd like for y'all to stand up, if you would. They are our election judge and our alternate. They managed an amazing number of people coming through Chavino Park, and I had the opportunity.
Their daughter and granddaughter.
Oh, and also helping out were Michelle Grinsby and Monique. And, oh yes, I recognize both of you. I came down here several, several times, please stand up. I came by several times during the election cycle, about twice a day, to talk to the people that were waiting, and they all had excellent things to say about you and your crew. These people were very hospitable to our citizens. If folks had elderly or had the infirm with them, they would come out to the street, or they would move them to the front of the line. And I know that the citizens appreciated that. Even the people that were waiting in line appreciated that we were a community that reached out. And I thank you for demonstrating the hospitality that Chavino Park wants to show to the world. And y'all are honorary citizens of Chavino Park today, and thank you for your efforts.
For what it's worth, we really do feel welcome here.
Well, thank you.
This is like, we continue to come.
That's great.
We have our options.
Thank you.
They didn't compare. We've been all over the county, we went wherever they wouldn't need us, and we liked it.
Thank you much, Don, Gwen. Item 5.4, holiday event.
Right around the corner, a week from Saturday, down here at city hall, we have photos of Santa, same kind of activities we had the last time. We have food trucks, we have crafts, we have entertainment. It's going to be a lot of fun. We'll have the tree lighting at dusk, and I hope everybody, staff, and residents will all come and join us.
Okay, very good. Now, can we be looking forward to receiving some type of card from the community on the event, or is that already arrived in our mailboxes?
I don't know that it's arrived, but you'll be getting one.
We're all going to be getting a card concerning the event that highlights the times and the activities. Did we ever wind up getting like a shuttle service or anything like that? Is that going to be available?
Nope.
Okay.
It's fend-for-yourself parking.
But there will be parking behind city hall, and I'm sure we're going to put some parking along the area streets and as well as at the fire station. Right? Okay, awesome. So look forward to everybody coming out for the holiday event. Brings us to item 6.1, discussion action authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with KFW Engineering for project management and engineering services. Bill?
And we do have representatives from KFW here, Ed and Stephen over here. On October 24th, at the city council meeting, council authorized city manager to negotiate fees with KFW Engineering for project management and engineering services. The caveat, if the negotiations for fees were not successful, that I would move down the line and continue to go through those firms. Government Code Chapter 2255 provides regulations on professional and consulting services and prohibits the selection of professional services on the basis of competitive bids. So again, as I briefed you before, we went out for a request for qualifications, we received 15 qualifications, we went through a process of selecting, we provided that selection, and then the last action was to authorize the negotiation. So that's where we are. Staff met and negotiated a fee schedule with KFW Engineering, which is considered fair and reasonable. You've got two attachments in your packet. Attachment A is the draft contract, which was a standard professional contracting agreement, contract which provided by our city attorney, modified to be specific to KFW Engineering. Annex A is the fee schedule. The second exhibit is the fee schedule, which compares the fees from this year's to last year's. And you will notice, and I said in the staff summary sheet, the fees have gone up, not considerably, but in most areas. In comparison with other proposed fees from other cities, which I was not able to compare fees with the selected firms, but I have compared fees with selected cities, you find that KFW's fees that we've negotiated fall somewhere in the middle. There's a number of examples of higher fees, a number of examples of lower fees. Lower fees are typically based upon a local engineering firm that's centered out of that particular city. So the proposed action is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with KFW Engineering for project management and engineering services, subject to your questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with KFW Engineering for project management and engineering services. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alderman, Barry are second in the motion. We're now open for discussion. Do we have any questions? If there are no questions or discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We appreciate y'all coming out, we look forward to years of continued receipt of your very able services.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item 6.2, discussion action, consider revision of ordinance to allow carports to be substituted for garage space, open to street, load in front, and be freestanding. In addition, ordinance should specify type of structures allowed. Michelle.
First, I wanted to bring it to council to see if they had any thought or guidance on whether we should send it to planning and zoning, whether we should have some open hearings. I've had a lot of feedback from people about the particular discussion of carports right now. We have rules in place that require the carport to be attached, but then we don't really like carports, and I honestly think we need to review it and be more open to the option of carports. I don't want carports like the little flimsy ones you buy for $89 at Home Depot with cloth tops. I think if it's site-built and it matches and is in keeping with the house, I don't know why we care if it's attached or not attached, or where it's located on the side or back of the property. So I would like to open that up for discussion on whether or not we should send it to planning and zoning, or somehow hold public hearings and ask for some feedback.
Okay, so you're making a motion to open this up for discussion and to submit it to planning and zoning for the topics that are set forth in item 6.2?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're now open for discussion. You know, there are two aspects. One is, how are we going to do this? The second one is to have it explored by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It may be just simply appropriate for the Planning and Zoning Commission to do that, and the benefit of our discussion at this point would be to fine-tune some of the thoughts that council members may have concerning the process, but otherwise, it would be to simply take the items that you've listed here and to explore each one of them at the planning and zoning level. Is that correct?
And that's fine, they can explore it, and I want them to get a lot of citizen input, because I don't want it to turn out like accessory buildings. I want people to be able to have the ability to put in a carport if they feel, if they so choose. I don't understand, we can regulate that it has a certain aesthetic, well, we can't really regulate that, but we can regulate that it meets, you know, our building code requirements, and why do we care about having it attached or detached or in certain places? We allow porticoes, so I'd like it to go to planning and zoning, and I'd like them to explore it, and I'd like us to do our usual routine of having citizen input and public hearings or open forums through planning and zoning.
Okay, and of course, we do allow for carports in certain commercial properties that are, that have limited view from the street area to govern the aesthetic issues concerning that. I believe there are a couple of permitted designs.
This is not at all in my mind to do with commercial, it is only to do with residential, and frankly, only on the old side.
Okay.
Because the HOAs have their own rules about such things.
So the consideration would be for the estates, the old, old section of Chavino Park and the new, old section of Chavino Park?
Yes.
Okay. Alan?
The only comment I wanted to make was, all the photographs you gave here are very pretty, attached, and, you know, some of those I look at as sort of a front portico or a soli port, using the old term. So I didn't see any examples of freestanding other than these that look like commercial bus stops at the end.
But I just gave, well, and I gave pictures of what I think is aesthetically appropriate as examples, I can give you examples of what I don't think is, but I'm sure that people can come up with that. I mean, we know what we don't want to see, we don't want to see temporary cloth, you know, little like tents up.
Yeah, and it's hard for me, I must admit, to look at this, because I live in one of those gated communities where we're not allowed to do this, so, you know, I don't know how to look at it personally, but I'm open to go to P&amp;Z and get some feedback from the citizens of the city.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Mary Ann?
I note that it looks like the options you put down were three options, direct staff to research for council consideration, direct P&amp;Z to review and make recommendations to council, create council subcommittee to review and bring back to council. My only question is, what kind of feedback are we getting from residents now? I mean, is this something that the residents are coming to city hall and asking for variances or trying to get additional information about carports? And the reason why I ask that is because I don't know what the schedule is like for P&amp;Z, I don't know, and if the option is better to have staff research it, to say, these are the requests that are coming in from residents, this is how many people have come in in the past 12 months, asking about it, and then maybe it might be better suited at that point to go to P&amp;Z. I don't know, I don't want to overburden P&amp;Z, I don't know how overburdened they are at this point. I don't want to overburden staff either, though.
I think you make a good point. I will say that there's not, I'm not aware of any direct requests that have come in or that have come into.
Eric called staff, and there have been a number of people, and they've called me because they've read the ordinance and know they can't do it.
Right, so in order to get system feedback, I think the forum of the P&amp;Zs is probably appropriate from that standpoint, and we've got a model here with accessory buildings now to where they're, we've got folks coming in and participating into that thing. So I don't have a lot of feedback where the staff could then just decide what the, you know, here's what we know that's going on at this point.
Perfect, I just saw it as an option and wanted to question it.
Well, and that's why I put the three options, but I do, you know, I've had people, plus the other issue is, people would like to be able to build a carport, even though their two-car garage has been converted at some point in time, and we don't allow that either. And so I think we need a little more flexibility.
Okay, is there any further discussion concerning sending carports to, carport, ports, not car parts, but carports to the Planning and Zoning Commission? Okay, there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 6.3, update online payment and survey capabilities. Bill?
So Curtis, if you could come up here, I will just kind of give you the background. The city launched its new website in January 2016. We currently don't have a capability to conduct a large sophisticated online survey. The website does not have online payment options, except for traffic ticket payments and water bills, both through a third-party provider, which is integrated through Ncode, and that's the key part. What we do have is integrated through Ncode, and so the website itself cannot handle online payments. So with that, I'll pass it off to Curtis, who's done quite a bit of coordination with the website providers, to give you specifics. Go ahead.
Evening, mayor and council. It really depends on the scale of what we want to do. So with surveying, with Revize, we have a contract with them, they're able to do, they have modules, and they can do work for us. If you want very simple surveys, I can just build a form, it can send an emails, that's really easy to do. I don't have the advanced tools of a company, any third-party, that's dedicated to surveying, like a Survey Monkey. Revize doesn't have those tools. When I talked to them, they said the majority of cities use those third-party providers for surveying residents. As for permits, again, if it's just a simple, if you just want to handle tree permits, that's relatively easy to either, they work with a company called Point and Play, it's provided under the contract, they would set it up with a website, wouldn't cost anything to the city, and we could have a fillable PDF form, again, I could build a form, and if a resident wanted to fill a tree permit, that would be pretty easy to do. But if you want more online permits, more complex online permits, again, that's when you start getting out of the realm of what Revize is able to provide to us, and again, what a third-party provider. And we've looked at several other third-party providers, specifically Civil Systems, Bay of Plano, Texas, and My Permits Now, which is from Louisiana, but all of them have a range of costs and capabilities and pros and cons, and I don't think staff has enough direction exactly how we want to tackle this.
So there's also a couple issues, or challenges, I should say, challenges. So with the online payment, for example, there's challenges associated linking with cash receipts and the payments that are done online through the Ncode, such that you receive a payment, and there's got to be a series of pieces that links into our financial software so we can track receipt of the payments and funds and where they come from. So one of the, one of the things would facilitate that is if we were using the Ncode permitting software. So the problem with that is, we are using another software now, and our cumulative history of all the permitting exists on this one permitting software code that we have. So we really do use the historical use of, you know, every address is every permit they pull, at least through the time that we've been using this, this software has that. So that would be an issue that we would have to overcome associated with that. And then, just to kind of highlight the Survey Monkey, there's been some concerns about the security of that, and I've heard, for example, an example of where there was an organization that did a survey, and then their results were provided, and then not only the results provided, but who voted for what in the survey was also available associated with that. So that's the question I asked Curtis to look into. If you use Survey Monkey, for example, what checks and balances, security measures they have? Would you talk that for a second, Curtis?
Well, Survey Monkey or other third parties, they can, a survey company can provide a confidential and, you know, like a secret ballot, they're able to do that. Their company's reputation is based upon that. So from the perspective of whether or not it'd be secure and people, residents would have confidence that their answers would be confidential, I don't think that's an issue. What Bill was touching on was the Texas Public Information Act, and of course, any business the city does is public record. And open, I think, if a survey company, if they collect data, and even though it might be confidential, they're still collecting maybe from a computer, your IP address, your browser using computer data, stuff that could be potentially identifiable if someone was so inclined. And if, under a Public Information Act request, would that information have to be handed over? And that's what I've been looking at, but I don't have a clear answer either way, I don't know, even the Attorney General has a clear answer either way on that.
There is a 2015 case where there was a Public Information Act or requested of the city of Austin, and basically, the city attorney concluded that it was subject to Public Information Act. And they went for an Attorney General opinion that was provided in December 2015, which basically stated that it, yes, it did. that was provided in December 2015, which basically stated that it, yes, it did, subject to the Public Information Act unless it falls within the exceptions of public disclosure. And then it went on to say that because of competitive advantage and disadvantages associated with compromising information that was provided, if it was released, the Attorney General concluded the city may withhold the information under that section. And so ultimately, it was a case-by-case basis and it depends. And so we did go back into Survey Monkey and say, you know, if you did a survey, could you make it to where there was no names provided, addresses provided, and they can do that? They can protect that, so it's, you know, yes, no, fill out multiple choice, and you wouldn't have that personal information. You may be subject to computer IP addresses or something of that nature, and of which, you know, if someone did a public information request, and if the company actually provided it to the city and we provided it to somebody else, it would be very difficult to actually use that information. Survey Monkey would not address a hypothetical situation, we did ask them, but we're pretty sure, we don't have any way of really knowing, that if there was a survey, there would be some information that would be gathered, it would be traceable back to computers. I mean, that's how they essentially protect the number of surveys. You can only typically submit one survey per IP address. But it's doubtful that Survey Monkey would provide that, especially if there was, in the contract for the survey, there was a disclosure that said that we are going to protect the identity and keep the information confidential. So, what I, what we do know is that numerous cities use tools like Survey Monkey, and it goes back to Curtis's point, what's the scope of what we're trying to do? And is it something that we're trying to get a feel for citizens? Or is it something that we're trying to then, you know, here's the accessory building proposal, here's some options, and we're trying to get some feedback on a policy decision? How might that affect the interest level and then the emotions associated with that? You know, might depend upon how we, we approached it. So, again, I don't know if we.
We've already talked about this before, I mean, we've had the same discussion, and it doesn't, there's no answer to that. I mean, you tell the citizens you're putting a survey out, and it could be subject to the Open Meetings Act, and you're done, but the problem is, we use the iInfo service, we don't have those emails, so who are we going to mail a survey to anyway? The only way that, and the other way I talked about us doing it was sending out, like a postcard, saying, "Go online and fill out some sort of survey." So we don't have that kind of option where they can go fill it out on our website. We should be able to because we can take forms online that people fill out and send with their opinions about, you know, I don't know, whatever, tree trimming or something that, that they don't like. So, can't we look at it in a different way than, because we're, we don't have any email addresses anyway. So if we get out and start saying, and even in iInfo, we've got, what, three, four hundred, maybe? Yeah, so, that really doesn't help us, I mean, doing it that way doesn't help us. We need a different way to do it that will get the most amount of people to pay attention. And I thought we were going to look into that option of mailing something to residents saying, "Go online and sign, you know, go to this form and fill it out if you're interested." And we code it so that we don't get, you know, twenty responses from the same address or whatever. So, I, I mean, I don't think that, you know, I don't mind doing Survey Monkey, but I don't know who we'd mail it to since we'd have to then go out and ask everybody to give us addresses, and that's going to confuse residents because they've been giving us addresses for iInfo, but they don't understand that we can't use those, they aren't ours. So are we going to get iInfo? Would they allow us to use the email addresses? I don't think so, we don't even know what they are. So, I have a problem with that. The other thing is, when we said we were starting, going to do the website, we said that as a council, we wanted to be able to pay for permits online. Have we researched other cities? Do no, no other cities do it? Is it just not a viable option? I thought we were going to be able to do that, and for example, if I come down here and pull a permit for a roof, so I come down here and I fill out the paperwork, I turn it in to Marissa, then Marissa has to run through the machination she does, then she calls up and says, "Come on back down, and then, you know, you pay for it and then we'll give you the permit." Why can't we have that step be something we could not have to come down, but we just go online and it's there and we can pay for it? Is that not a possibility?
It certainly is a possibility, and is it, and again, for just, just like, just tree permits only, I think I could do that with Revise, just me and our, and our current company. If you want any expansion beyond that, especially stuff that's licensed under the state and such, you're going to need a third-party that's dead, has dedicated software or web portal, something they built, that's something that Revise isn't going to be able to handle.
Okay.
The, the practicality of, of doing that, just watching, because I, I approve every permit after it goes through the building inspector and through the review process. There's a number of review processes that occur, so the payment is at the end. And then, the payment coming, and then there is the typical person that comes in. Again, you know, they know they need to get the permit, it's usually their contractor that comes in. "How much is it going to cost?" "Oh, about $500." "Okay, well, where's, where's the invoice you're going to spend?" "Okay." We go through this process and it is a, it's checks and balances in, that exist, and, and so when you're dealing with, and then there's different scales associated with a lot of things, you're pretty complicated, and then, you know, what Curtis says, if it's a tree permit, that's easy, it's, you know, thirty bucks a year, or, and it's, it's manageable because you, you have a finite list of, of folks that are coming forward for an address. And then it'll, then those receipts will all have to be manually re-entered into Ncode associated with, you know, the, the, the staff actions remain the same or more to deal with that. It's conven, more convenient for the citizens, but we haven't broken the code in an easy solution to permit and to go completely online, I guess that's the bottom line.
So have we talked to other cities to see what they're doing?
Well, Bruce Beeler, our building inspectors, they're, they really champion a company called My Permit Now, and they've had, I think Leon Valley's went to them, and, and some of the other cities they work with are going to My Permit Now, but while My Permit Now is very, has a lot of capabilities, and it's, I mean, just flat out, it's very cool, and I think it's exactly what many people want, with, you know, mobile access and ease of which you're able to draw permits, both from the contractors and homeowners, but it's expensive, it costs money. And a lot of cities charge technology fees to, you know, defray those costs. Even another company I was working with from Plano, Texas, Civil Systems, it's a negotiated fee, percentage fee of the fee that we charge. So if we charge thirty bucks, they may, I don't, I don't know, maybe it's ten percent or five percent or whatever of an overcharge. And again, do you pass it on? Do you, do you take, do you eat it, you know, as a city, you know? So, there's other companies, I haven't gone out, we haven't bid it out, we haven't, we don't, we haven't done through that whole process, but if we do want to do that, I think that would be the way to go.
Okay. Bob?
What is, what are the costs associated with Survey Monkey for the city? Is there, if, if we did decide to do that?
Uh, they have.
Plans?
We, they have like, yeah, they have several different tiers, like, you know, silver, gold, bronze and such, and I think if I remember correctly, we would probably just want the silver tier. It's like twenty bucks a month, times twelve, it's not a significant amount of money.
And that would encompass one survey to however many surveys we want to do?
Uh, I think it was like a hundred surveys a year, which I think would probably, something like that. And it, like a thousand responses per survey, which that would assume, you know, really high response rate in every single survey, so.
We'd have to have the email addresses.
Well, my, my understanding is that the, the presentation given regarding Survey Monkey in particular doesn't require email addresses, we're not sending an email to individuals. It's a, it's put on the website, and we notify residents on the marquee, we put it in the Road Runner, we could send a postcard, and then whoever wants to fill out the survey goes to our website and completes the survey. It's not, and, and there's no need for email, is that correct?
That's, is that a possibility?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because when we use Survey Monkey with other organizations, we email everybody.
Well, sometimes you have an email list and you tell people, "Hey, we've got the survey up on the website, go to this, go to the website and complete it." But the, the survey is on the website. You don't have to mail the ser, email the survey to anybody, it's there on the website.
But we still have to send out a postcard or do some sort of.
Or you have to notify people, you have to let people know it's there, one way or the other, so.
But, but my thought on that is exactly what you're saying, is that it, it takes us to a different level than what we're doing now, gives the residents, if, if we may not be driving a ton of traffic to the website right now, but the numbers are pretty good, and a lot of people are using it. Whether that's residents, we, you know, we don't know those exact numbers now, but if we have a vehicle in which they can respond, even if it's whatever percentage, feedback on the accessories or the, you know, any of the, any of the things that we've talked about, I mean, that's good feedback that we don't typically get. So I, I think it is, I don't think you have to have, I mean, we do the same thing in our company where we get the email, Survey Monkey, but to, to me, this is a vehicle in which it's there, hopefully more and more people use it, and if we have ways to identify, iInfo's got four hundred people on it, newsletter now, the marquee's a great idea, the, you know, those are, that's what we have right now. Then we can use it, we've been, you know, we've been trying to get this, this survey capability for, you know, two years now. I think we just, I think we need to pursue it. If we feel comfortable with the security aspect of it, and that's a big question I think we all had, and if we do, and we feel like the confidentiality is there, then, then I think it's something we ought to probably pursue.
I think I feel comfortable enough on the, on the security piece.
Is that?
Based upon what we're going to provide and the difficulty. There's always some risk, but I, that doesn't make me too uncomfortable. Many cities are doing this.
And the AG's opinion with respect to the city of Austin, did that relate to a Survey Monkey that they used?
It was a different survey firm, they signed a contract with them.
Okay.
The contracts, the survey went out and said, "The information that you're providing will be anonymous." And, and so then later on, you know, the, the details were some professor from UT wanted the information for a cla, for a, a classroom study and to, and to validate this. And so, the raw data was never part of the contract associated with that. And so, again, I've got a call-in to their actual Economic Development Corporation that did the survey, but I haven't got the feedback on it, but, but, but I've never heard of any of the cities that I've ever dealing with that used Survey Monkey had a problem. I, I wouldn't be uncomfortable at all, I think it's a minimal cost, we could probably, that would be the easy one to sign up for and then start exploring how, what we would want to do the survey for.
And the other thing to keep in mind, because I know the last time we did a survey, there was an issue of, we want an outside firm to do the questions. With Survey Monkey, I'm assuming staff is going to come up with whatever survey we come up with, and that's how it should be, in terms of whatever we need to get out to residents in terms of, "We need your feedback." It's not like Survey Monkey is going to come up with the questions.
Right.
We're going to create this survey, and by "we" I mean you, city manager.
We could come up with some easy things to start off with and get people used to doing that.
Absolutely.
Okay, any more discussion? Curtis, thank you very much for your hard work. Oh.
No, I was just going to say, you know, so what is the bottom line you're recommending? I think it's something we need to pursue, but I haven't gotten a sense of a recommendation from the staff.
Well, the agenda item was just an on, online payment and surveys capability update, which we provided. This has been a, this has been a, you know, a, it's, it's prodded us to move forward and to, to research, and if consensus is we want to move forward with Survey Monkey, we can move forward with Survey Monkey. I'm more reluctant on the other piece, and we can continue to research it and provide options.
Okay.
I think consensus is to move forward on Survey Monkey, and I'm seeing heads shake back and forth, so.
Yeah, if we can do it without emails, which, you didn't correct me on that, because that's not the way we do it, but.
You're right, typically I receive an email that says, "Take your Survey Monkey," but if we can do it another way, that's great, and I think that we should be able to.
We're going to email the people that have the email on iInfo, right?
Well, yeah.
And. Well, you're going to send out iInfo?
Yes.
You're going to say, there's a, go to the website.
To the website, fill out, right?
Yeah.
And then maybe more people will sign up and.
Okay. Curtis, thank you very much, appreciate your very hard work. Item six four, discussion action, first reading ordinance O. 2016-019, amending appendix A, administration section of the fee schedule and to establish a transaction fee and service charge for the use of credit and debit cards as a form of payment for the fees, fines, court costs, utility payments and other charges, providing for a service, for a savings repealing clause, severability clause and declaring an effective date. Bill?
I'll work through this, and Laura, if I need some backup, you can back me up. During the budget process this summer, we discussed implementing a processing fee when accepting credit card payments for court permits, water departments, a number of items. And in fact, our current adopted budget includes revenues based upon projected future charge of the, of processing fee. A processing fee is allowed under the Local Government Code, Chapter 132, as a mean to, to, to collect back costs. So this action really is the action associated with the budget discussion that we current, we previously had. We currently have seven separate merchant IDs, five under what's called ETS and two under American Express, and it takes a number of different credit cards. And so, it's not a, oh, one shop fits all, there's different, there's different fees for different cards and different processes. In fact, fees charged by credit cards can vary as much as twenty different ways within one statement. And so what we did, what Laura did was she took an average of the fees associated with all these, and our fees charged to the city were 2.5%, 3%. The, the Local Government Code allows for fees not to exceed 5%. Ultimately, this is a very short, simple ordinance, which sets a set fee at 2.5% so that we're not having to distinguish between the different fees and different cards and not making it too much complicated. So the motion request is to approve ordinance O. 2016-19 with a 2.5% processing fee.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Some.
Motion to approve ordinance zero dash two zero one six dash zero one nine to approve a 2.5% processing fee.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mary Ann, we're open for discussion. How did we arrive at the 2.5% processing fee?
Took all the fees for the past year from all the different fee schedules and cards, and averaged it, it was 2.53, we just lowered it to 2.5 for, to round down.
And, and is that, but that, that's a uniform fee for everybody? Some fees are higher, some fees are lower, or how, how, what is the fee disparity if you use card A compared to card B? What, what is the range of fees?
Around 3%, but you cannot specifically charge a different fee from American Express. There is actually laws.
Okay.
But it, it varies, and I can't tell by the card. Well, if you get a piece of it, if you go to like a business card, you have a point system on your card, there's so many different, but for the utility billing, there's pretty different merchant services. And any, if we give a month, 1.29%, 2.16%, next month was 1.24% or 2.99%, and it's, it's all over the place, so it all averages each month, and it averages to 2.53%. So, a lot of cities, we even had to pull up the one we were comparing to, are at 3%, 2.5%, that's pretty, pretty wrong.
Okay. Okay.
And you, recognizing that some cards charge more, and I know you took a historic look back, is there any possibility that if citizens all of a sudden just start using American Express that the city has, and, and we're just charging 2.5%, that the city could get into any trouble? Or, do you know what I mean, in terms of having to eat a cost eventually?
Well, if I have an expense, the road, you're not covering the expense.
But in, I guess, in your historical look back, the, the 2.5% you think is pretty safe for the city?
I mean, if, if you want, I mean.
It's more than we've been charging.
But it's the average of everything, I mean, if you, if you went with 3%, you would cover yourself. But it's the average of everything, I mean, if you, if you went with three percent, you would cover yourself completely.
That's right.
American Express varies every month from three to two point nine, three point two, two point nine six, three point twelve, two ninety-five. It's great. You could just not take American Express as well.
Yeah, you suggested that already, no.
We, you know, it's half and half. I would say it's really more people who use American Express and building permits than anywhere.
Yeah, was that right?
Bob?
That's the biggest, I, I think it's a business.
The business card. Well, I was just going to say, I mean, we, you know, we're looking, I would imagine we're going to track this very carefully and we can look at it, you know, at some period of time, a year from now, and determine if we've, you know, we've lost money. I, I actually was going to suggest, I think, uh, most people don't use American Express, at least on the, on the, uh, personal side, but it sounds like commercial is a different ballgame, so that's, that's interesting.
You can have a utility billings, I can see it, and there is somebody's.
Okay.
Well, coming out of the budget cycle, we are not charging anything right now. When we discussed this in the budget workshops, we recognized that this was an opportunity to not have this as a cost. And so this is, the proposal at the two point five percent is certainly, uh, close to complete break even, which is a very positive step from a bud- budgetary standpoint.
But we're talking about, what, twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred?
Twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, twelve thousand? Oh, you're, oh, I was thinking water, sorry, total.
About half and half.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you, you think about point three percent of twelve thousand dollars, uh, that thirty bucks? Is that what that is? Point three percent?
Twelve thousand total collected over the year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a nom- or three hundred and sixty dollars, that's a nominal amount over a twelve-month period of time. It's a thirty dollar a month excess on average. Okay? Um, is there any further discussion?
I think you're saying the fees are twelve thousand.
Yeah, we all collect twelve thousand.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, no, the, the fees, we're going to collect twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand total per-
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're going to collect twelve thousand dollars extra, and the point three percent, we're going to not collect three hundred and sixty of that twelve thousand dollars.
If you went above that.
Yeah, above two po- two and a half.
Which is way better than what we've been doing for years.
Okay. Alan?
I would feel more comfortable so we don't short ourselves anything and look at either two point seven five or even three percent, rather than giving anything up, if that's what our intent is.
Well, Alan, um, you know, you can make a friendly amendment to Bob and see if he and, uh, Mary Ann will accept that as a proposed change to it.
Can we make money on it if we do that?
The state of Texas charges three percent on all charges, I believe, which is more than-
Are there other costs associated with credit cards? I did not go into that piece, so, well, there's, we wouldn't be collecting any money.
Okay.
This is just the credit card fee side, and you have some info cost and going cost.
Alan, did you want to make a motion?
It's easier than sending checks in and having her manually do it.
Yeah.
But yeah, the credit card slot on the utility billing is a great thing.
Okay. Uh, Alan, did you want to make a motion that we increase it from two point five?
Yes, and I don't know whether it should be an amended motion or a substitute, but I think the figure should be, uh, either two points five. I would actually just recommend doing three percent and get it over with.
Okay.
It'd be amended.
Amended, yeah.
Amended, okay.
Uh, do we have a second on the amendment to increase it to three percent?
I'll second it.
Okay, Bob has seconded the motion. Uh, do we have any discussion at three percent?
Does this discourage, it sounds like we like the credit card payments, especially on the utility side. Does this discourage a significant portion of that? I, I don't know how much history we have, obviously not much at all, but do you have any thoughts on that, Laura?
I, it could possibly, but in, on the utility side, there isn't the option of just doing a check type withdrawal, an ACH withdrawal, so they could instead of using their credit card.
But the point is-
But you still pay a fee on an ACH.
Um, I have to, I don't know what the fee is, it may be a, it may be a small service fee that I don't see, um, that you pay directly. I have to check into info because that's a third party.
Okay.
But not on the ACH, not on, no, not on the draft.
I don't think I ACH you.
No.
No, no, because that's just like a check, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the bottom line is we're trying to cover our costs, and I think that's where Alan's coming from, is that we're just, you know, it's not a significant amount, but it's enough to make a difference. We at least ought to cover our costs. I have, I don't have a problem with three percent if that's what you decide.
Mary Ann?
Um, I think when we discussed, part of the issue was mainly for, it, it wasn't so much an opportunity to, to make money, and, and I don't think that that's what we're talking about. It's, uh, we obviously want to cover our costs, but it was an opportunity to provide some convenience to residents as well as to streamline things for the folks working in City Hall. If, if, uh, the two point five percent will get it, we obviously have the finance, uh, director who has looked back historically to say, this is, this looks like it will work. Maybe we, maybe we think about increasing it, uh, a year from now with some historical data under our belt, but, you know, it's just whatever majority wants to do. Because I think it was, it was not so much, um, um, revenue thing, it was convenience for residents.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Then we'll have a vote on the amendment, uh, which is to change the fee percentage from two point five percent to three percent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to go with the ayes. Now we're going to vote on the, uh, so that, um, the propos- the, the made motion now is to approve the, um, first reading of ordinance O two thousand sixteen zero one nine, uh, to approve it with a three percent rate. Please note that this is a first reading, we can reconsider the rate at the next council-
Wait, so you went with-
I went with the ayes. Well, y'all can always lower it at the next meeting, I'm, you know, it just makes it easier to make the decision next time. We know that we're not going above three percent next time, it could come back down to two and a half.
I thought you were making it easy to go with what the ordinance said, which was two point five, but go ahead.
No, I'm going with them on the first reading. Uh, okay, so, uh, all in favor of approving it with a three percent fee?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Well, you know, I can kill this ordinance and we won't reconsider it, but it's worth twelve thousand dollars to the city of Chavino Park, so I'm going to vote aye.
Two point five percent.
Two point five percent.
Well, y'all are, y'all are voting not to collect it, is what you're voting with your vote.
And we would bring it back up in the next month.
And then we would, we would miss out on another month of the collection fees, a thousand dollars to the city of Chavino Park.
But this is only the first reading.
I know, but we would still not be able to collect this until February now, instead of January. Okay, the motion carries. Uh, that was Bob, Alan and Bob. Okay, uh, with, uh, without objection, I'm going to bring forward item six point seven from the consent agenda. Do I have an objection? Item six point seven is the approval of a final plat of subdivision plat of Chavino Park Frost Bank replat to add an additional approximate square footage of eighteen thousand two hundred and sixty-one to the one point seven eight acre tract of land out of an eighty-six point nine four acre tract of land as conveyed to Rogers Chavino Park Unit eighteen nineteen Limited and described in special warranty deed with vendors lien recorded in volume one zero zero seven five, pages one six zero nine through one six two four of the official public records of Chi- of Bear County, Texas, out of the Collins C McCray survey number three nine one, abstract four eight two, county block four seven eight two in the city of Chavino Park, Bear County, Texas. No objection?
I mistakenly called that six seven, it's eight seven.
Eight seven, I'm sorry, eight seven.
I was getting confused.
Okay, excuse me. To bring forward, is there any objection? Okay, uh, do I have a motion?
To approve?
To approve.
Oh. Uh, motion to approve final plat of subdivision plat of Chavino Park Frost Bank.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion car- carries. Happy Thanksgiving, guys, thank you for coming. Item six point five, discussion action. First reading of O two thousand sixteen zero two zero, amending the fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen water budget due to proposed repairs of the Trinity Well. Bill?
Um, we're going to show you some videos in a minute, but very complex situation with the Trinity Well. Let me just kind of just review, where have we been so far? The well was struck by lightning on the twentieth of, of July, and we went through some immediate repair, which led us into coming to city council on the twenty-fourth of August, requesting, um, approval of the, of second series of repairs. We followed that up on the twenty-ninth of August with a budget amendment for the repairs, and the second reading of that budget amendment was approved on the nineteenth of September. Um, subsequent to that, um, a lot of things have occurred. Okay, so again, initially, the, uh, the camera televising the entire casing of the well all the way down to approximately twelve thousand feet, eleven seventy, identified two maintenance problems besides the fact that the, the pump and the motor, uh, went out because of the lightning. The first one was a, uh, a long section of PVC pipe that needed to be removed from the well so you could put the, the pump and the, uh, and the motor back in. And the second piece is the screen vents were clogged. And the screen vents, I'm going to show you in a minute, are holes in the casing which allow water to seep through from the bottom. It allows you to fill your well up and you move forward. So if we could, I, I just want to give you a demonstration to, to see, to show you the, uh, the screen vents and how they're clogged. So if you take a look, this is the water in the well, in the Trinity Well, and there is the screen vents. Those are supposed to be, um, screened to where you, you can see that there is a layer of stuff that's completely clogged that, associated with that. And so this goes on and on, all the way down to eleven seventy, but, uh, so, one of the, uh, first repairs in, in, in August that was done was we put a, uh, big bore brush down there, kind of like you're cleaning your shotgun, and you take it in there and it gets cleaned out, and, and that's standard procedure. So that went through, and it actually did a lot of work, cleaned the water up as, as well. You can see the water quality is even a lot better right now, but you're going to get into the screens in just a second, as it moves forward, and you can see that, you can see the screens a lot better than what you could see before, but it's still clogged. It, it basically took the inside layer that was clogged, removed that, but from the actual screen outside, it's, you've still got a layer of clog that occurs there. So the problem wasn't solved. Um, I think we go to the next one. The next, the next, uh, operation was to sonar jet it, was, you take a charge and you discharge it in there and puts a, a sonar wavelength in there, it's supposed to break up this stuff. That, again, was marginally successful, and you can see the screens, you can see them a little bit better here, at a different angle, and you can see some chipping off of that where there's, uh, some of the, uh, layers been cracked in there successfully, but it didn't remove all this, um, all this residue buildup associated with that. So that's enough of the demonstration there, but I wanted you to get a visual. We've only got one set of screens in this well, and so if it gets clogged up, the well, um, goes out of operation. So we've been working with Advanced Waterwell Technologies, uh, pretty reputable firm associated with that. Um, they propose an acid treatment, which is a fairly common, um, treatment of wells, but it's not without risk. If you get the mixture wrong, you can actually deteriorate too much of the well and the gravel, um, lining that occurs with this, and you could, that in itself could, um, work through that. So it was a pretty high cost to do that, so, well, in, in coordination with our city engineer, uh, we were put in touch with Grant Snyder, who is a geologist consultant, who was originally working with the, the well associated with this. And, you know, our point was, we're not just going to take a look at this quote and say, yeah, we, you know, Advanced Waterwell Technologies, and you're, you've done so much great work already, we're just going to put this extra money down. We want to take a look at this. You know, we identified three, we went to some other sources. Brandon went to another consultant that does, uh, Trinity Wells. That guy said you can air jet the screens with a five hundred PSI, um, process, which basically puts a whole bunch of pressure and tries to, to break out the, that, uh, mill, you know, that, uh, that buildup associated with that. We could acid, acidize the well in accordance with the AWWT plan. Uh, Grant recommended that we take water samples and ship it to a specialty lab in Kansas. Labs that have more expertise associated with this can provide specific recommendations for that. We went, uh, I know we were, I sent a note out to council updating you on that, that's what we intended to do. We advised the water advisory, the water advisory committee doing that. So we, we took those, uh, wells. We, we received their completed report on October twenty-first, and it's in your packet. I passed it out to you in previous emails, as well as the water advisory committee. But I might, I'm going to summarize part of this. The Trinity Well is a complex chemistry problem, which is just the water in itself. It's not bad, it's just a complex, and it, and it, basically it's complicated by the galvanized iron material used in the column pipe. The column pipe is what you put down in the well, and you put the, the motor and the pump at the bottom down there that sucks the water up. So you've got to actually have a mechanism to, to put all that water down there. What the city has used is galvanized iron, which is common in a lot of wells. The problem is that the, um, the chemical composition of the water and the minerals associated with it are reacting with that galvanized iron. The galvanized iron serves as a sacrificial, sacrificial lamb, and what's, what's occurring is the water is attacking that iron. Uh, a byproduct of that is the coloration that, that is sometimes seen, especially at the ends of those, uh, lines, as well as when you have that water stagnant for a while, when it first comes out, it's been sitting in that iron, and you get discoloration. So that was part of the problem, and the other problem was, what do we do to break up this deposit that's associated with the fins? Um, the report came up with a detailed recommendation of a, a series of chemicals that would be used to acidize the, uh, the well. It also recommended that we use an alternate, um, column pipe besides galvanized, um, iron. Uh, they came up with, uh, five specific, general steps of, of recommendations. First, fully evacuate or flush the well with all the debris that's, that's gone in there now. Then chemically treat the well to clear the vents and the filter pack. Then you have to disinfect the well, neutralize the acid, then disinfect it. There's two steps there, has to be flushed, and then you have to put it back into operation. So we got, um, we get, we, just to repeat, we've got two problems. Replace the, the nine hundred and forty-five column, feet of column pipe, and then to, uh, clear the, the screening vents. On October twenty-fourth, we met with a consultant and the contractor, and probably spent two hours going through different courses of action, and we came up with the general course of action, which he came back and provided as an invoice from. That invoice was approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars to complete all five of those steps, as to wells, to re- reinstall the co- the, uh, column pipes and the, uh, the pumps, which we're, um, working through there. We went, uh, back to the water advisory committee and briefed them on, on that, and that was, um, on October twenty-seventh. Water advisory committee had a number of questions associated with what are alternative methods for treatment? Uh, why use galvanized steel, galvanized, uh, stainless steel was the recommendation. Stainless steel has some complications associated with what's called galling or welding together, and not as easy to take it apart if you're going to have to pull the well out in the future. Sometimes they don't unscrew, you got to cut it and then you got to re-thread it. We took all those questions back, met again with the contractor and our geologist consultant. We concluded that there really is no shortcuts to this, and that we really do need to use stainless steel. We brought, um, we brought Grant Snyder back into the water advisory committee, and we, we and staff and Grant briefed the water advisory committee. Water advisory committee concluded- Water advisory committee concluded and has made a recommendation to approve this work to get the well back into operation. Subsequent to that, there was an email provided to staff, which, from 2012, which was a quote to unclog the, the screen vents back then. So the quote was for $8,000, it was essentially use the bore cleaner, the brush that goes out there and clean that. That work was done in 2012. It was never camered again to see whether or not it was successful. And so we put the, the well back into operation. It actually didn't go into operation in 2014. We don't know, but we can assume, and, and I, you know, I, I did some work, and I, I verified that with the previous public works director back at the time. We can conclude that the treatment was, obviously, worked a bit, and there was some cleaning of the, of the vents that occurred, because just like this time, the first time we used the bore brush and we cleaned it, it worked to some degree, but didn't fully clear that So again, that, more reason to take the full measures and steps associated with this to try to get it back into full operation. Again, WAC approved a recommendation to council to proceed, and I'll talk the cost there. I will say that there are two potential cost estimates, increases that could happen. Once you acidize the well, you have to neutralize the acid before you can pump the stuff out and then can evacuate that out. If, if, if we're not able to neutralize it successfully, then it has to be pumped up into, into trucks, and then shipped out, and then disposed of in appropriate disposal site. Estimate that that would cost approximately $10,000. We also have a 100 horsepower pump. 100 horsepower pump was bought originally in 2009, when the well was put into operation. In 2011 or 12, the well was capped so that two of the vents, holes that existed when it was originally built, were capped, because that was thought to provide a lower quality of, of water with a significant amount of iron. So it was capped so that we would prevent that lower quality iron to coming into the well. So what that means is that the 100 horsepower well pump, which was originally meant for a series of these three vent sections, is now pulling from only one, and it's clogged. It's been working successfully because Lou Meins, previous guy, Public Works Director, we put it into operation, and it was managing and controlled, even with the vents clogged. We are going to do a, a well pump test this time, and we're going to put this 100 horsepower motor in the well, and then measure the effects associated with what the pumping is going to do. Because as you know, when you pump water, it's like a sink, and it, it draws down the water, and if you draw down too much, you could draw it down to where you're exposing the pump, and it's pumping dry. Supposed to have checks and balances to where it turns off automatically. We've got a number of measures which Brandon has taken to protect the, this well from surge protection, from lightning, from automatic turnoffs associated with that, but we want to pump right. So if, if 100 horsepower pump is deemed to be significantly too much, can't be used, then we'll have to purchase a 70 horsepower pump. We've already purchased the 100 horsepower pump, so the cost difference would be whatever the purchase price is, which is about $18,000, minus the resale value, which we think we could get quite a bit. Brandon has been in touch with the manufacturer of the pumps, and we are hopeful that they're going to allow us to use a test pump for the 100 horsepower pump, so we don't have to use the new one, because we used the new one, then, then we bought it. So he's coordinated with the, the company last week. We haven't got an answer as to whether that could occur or not. But that, again, is a fairly complex situation here, and I, I, I had several conversations with Advanced Waterwell Technologies. What's their confidence level on performing this procedure and making it successful? High? Have you seen comparable ones? Yes, and some much worse, and we've got them back into operations. And so, you know, there's always a possibility that we could do this, and it would have less than desirable effects, but I'm pretty confident, based upon the information that we have, that this is the, the best procedure, and it needs to occur. So, again, the, the specific cost of this is 105,800. We previously approved a budget amendment, which included the cost of the pump and the, and the installing the pumps, but we did not execute that during last year's budget cycle, so that part of this amendment brings it from last year to this year and updates that. So subject to your questions, which you may have.
Subject to opening the discussion, I'm going to recognize Al Whaley, who I believe is now the chairman of the water committee, as a secondary presenter on this matter.
Yes, I do, I do currently, I'm Al Whaley, and I do currently chair the water advisory committee. We, we actually have a significant amount of expertise currently on the committee, including people who understood things like the stainless steel and the galling and several things. We ask a number of questions, we got, we think, good answers. There's no 100% guarantee on this. Anytime you're dealing with a well, there's some risk, so we, we recognize that. The other thing that, and Bill, I think, gave a good explanation of what we've gone through, all this process, but the other thing that we talked about, and that we think maybe really may be playing in this, is sort of an electrolysis. I mean, it's almost like an anode and cathode on a, on a battery, and you have, you previously had two dissimilar metals in there with the, the iron, basically, as, as Bill said, acting as a sacrificial anode. So we think there was an electrical reaction between the two, by virtue of the water carrying the electro, electro, electrical charges. And a good friend of mine, who's a, an engineer for oil wells, says that they've had issues when they didn't have a pump completely grounded or adequately grounded. So that's one of the things we're going to make sure of, is this is reinstalled, is that it's totally grounded, and we will check that process to make sure that we've reduced the chance of an electrical, the similarity between the pipe in the center and the outer casing, which is a different type of metal. But it was the complete unanimous opinion of the water advisory committee to proceed with the recommendation, as Bill has described.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Okay, brings us to a motion to approve ordinance O 2016-020, amending the fiscal year 2016-2017 water budget. Do I have a motion? Bob has moved to approve the ordinance change. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alan has seconded the motion. We're now open for discussion. Michelle?
Wasn't Grant the one who designed the Trinity well?
He was involved in the design, yes.
So I'm not sure that bringing him in to help us, when he's the one who thought it was a good idea to put the iron pipe in to do the things he did that aren't working as the consultant, I'm not sure why we wouldn't have had a different person. Do, I mean, I don't...
In my opinion, I've heard of Grant, and he's very competent, and he...
Al, why don't you stand with the lectern if you would? I'm, I'm sorry.
It's not that he's not competent, he's the one who recommended the system that we put in.
He, he was part of the design, but there was, he was part of an engineering company.
Yes.
He was not the engineer. So it was his, I totally agree, it was his company, but in this case, we had not just Grant. Grant brought a lot of knowledge and could talk about specifics of what was where, and I believe he brought a lot of documentation that he shared back with the city, because unfortunately, we did not have our own copy of some of that documentation. So we, we, we've not been diligent always in keeping records in the past. I'm sure we're doing much better now. But I, we did not rely entirely on Grant. We had the lab reports, we had the, the company who is actually doing the work, who had engineers, so, and we had also the city engineer look at it as well. So it was not solely Grant.
Okay, because you and I were around when that happened, and he used to get up and brief us on it and tell us all the stuff.
I was here, as you well know. So yes.
So...
He was, he also did not, he was not here when the well was completed.
Correct.
He was, he was taken off that project.
Yes.
Yes, I agree with all that. I have no argument with what you're saying.
He left in 2010, and started his own consulting company. Now, whether that was, what the circumstances are, I don't have any knowledge of, of whether that was volunteer or pushed.
If, if you look at the actual recommendation we're following, it's almost specifically as spelled out by the test lab, and it's what they recommended.
Okay.
And that was not Grant's doing.
Okay.
Okay.
Who's next?
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann?
Can you refresh my memory in terms of how many homes are being served by the well?
It's approximately 670, 685.
685, okay. And I recognize, you know, we saw the, the videos regarding the cleaning, and I see the cost at 22.8 for cleaning the screens, vents. What is the cost to replace them? Do you know?
It's not possible to replace them.
Okay.
You would have to drill a new well. And the reason is, it's part of the outer casing. There really are like little louvers. If you looked at it, it's, it's a thick pipe, and those are really the louvers with a screen, and it's part of the casing. That casing is locked in place down there, and you could not replace it. There is no way to do that, that I, that anybody is aware of. It would simply, the, the solution would be drill a new well.
Okay. And I attended one of the, the WAC meetings, and they had a lot of great questions, and I think Ms. Kautz had one. I'm not saying that this was her question, but I picked up on some of the questions that were there from the meeting, and if we do tonight, or approve tonight to take action as, as recommended, will this solve the seemingly never-ending problems with the Trinity well?
Again, based upon the information that we have, this is the best proposal. And if you're asking me to say, it was, 100% is it going to solve it, I can't tell you that. But I think in this case, we brought in Grant, who's a geologist and a subject matter expert. We sent water results to a lab, a specialty lab, and they provided the recommendations, which had been adopted by the contractor with a few modifications, and it's the best solution that we know of at this time.
Okay.
If we, if the water advisory committee had not had a good level of confidence that it would work, we would not have recommended to proceed.
And will a lightning strike put us right back where we are now? Or will the grounding resolve it? Or what are we doing to avoid? I mean, we can't control the lightning.
The two problems that we're dealing with now are, are not related to the lightning at all. The, the clog fins, and then the column pipe. To, in regards to a potential threat of lightning in the future, there are safeguards which we can make, in which a, a ground and a surge protector, and a couple of other things, Brandon, you want, want to mention on that, but we are taking precautions to address if a lightning strike hits, because it didn't really hit the, the well site. It hit the ground somewhere, and it traveled into this thing.
Right.
Yeah, it was an indirect hit. So basically, it was somewhere within about a one mile radius of where the wall, where the well is at. We're going to put a lighting resistor on there, which will try and help absorb the heat from the top, so it doesn't get back down to the motor and the pump at the bottom. So if anything, it's going to blow that one component, it's about $1,500, so we don't have to replace all of the pump and motor again. We just have to replace that one component on the top, on the surface.
You have any other discussion, any other questions? There being no further discussion or questions, all in favor of approving ordinance O 2016-020, amending the fiscal year 2016-2017 water budget. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6.6, discussion action, resolution R 2016-024, adopting policy number 12, donation of vacation leave, sick leave, policy pool. Bill?
So the, the background behind this is we've had several occasions where an employee has experienced a medical, a major medical condition, exhausted all leave, and has not been able, has been very difficult to make ends meet for a period of time. And that's not just been since I've been here, but as I understand it, you know, five, 10 years passed. And we've been approached by some employees, wished to help some of their other coworkers. Historically, I don't have the exact dates and times, but I did run into some previous agendas where there was a, an authorization on a, to authorize transfer of leave to a, an employee. So we did some background on that. Numerous cities, states, and federal agencies have adopted leave donation policies and regulations. We've coordinated with the city attorney, associated with that. We've researched and located several other policies of similar cities, and, and we've developed a guide. You know, there's an option to donate, you know, Bill Hill gets sick, and I've used all my stuff, and the question is, do we allow people to donate directly to him? The other, other option really is to create a, a donation pool, a sick leave pool, where people can donate, and then it's not specific to an individual. So after researching that and looking at the guidelines associated with IRS rules and other policies, we've concluded that a leave donation pool is, is the best process for having to do that. It doesn't put the city at risk if, if, if Hill gets a lot of leave donated, but then Jones doesn't, you know, and we could be discriminating against Jones or various other things associated with that. Guidelines for implementing policies are actually pretty liberal. The most important thing is you have to have written policy, which we don't have, and it needs to be a fair implementation plan, in which we believe this policy achieves. Staff's also, you know, first reaction was a, a donation pool is complicated and it's hard to manage. But in fact, INCODE has a leave donation pool piece to that, which we already have access to, we just never used it. And we've concluded that actually, it's, the implementation of that program is fairly easy, because it's not tracked on an Excel spreadsheet, or a, you know, pen and ink hand down, it's done through our normal payroll and leave process, which can be done pretty, pretty effectively. So the idea would be that we would pass this as a policy. It'd be in a resolution form, resolution R 2016-24, and that when we update the employee manual, which we expect to bring to city council in January with a few tweaks to it, we would update that to include this, because that's really where the employees kind of see what the policies are in place. So our motion requested is to approve the resolution approving a, a donation of vacation leave and a sick pool, sick leave pool policy, because it's really, the only, the other one thing I didn't mention is that, that we would be donating vacation leave, which is earned, and there's a monetary value to that, and then it would be donated in terms of a, a sick leave pool, where people would be taking sick pay, and they would, you know, taking sick leave from the pool, and, and they would get paid. And of course, there's an approval process. The policy outlines a, a number of conditions associated with that. You just can't donate all your leave, you have to maintain a certain amount of leave. In, in an individual account, there is a maximum leave that can be used by somebody on sick leave, and there's a number of, of what I think are checks and balances associated with it. So you've got the specific policy, I, we can answer any of the specific questions that you might have.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve resolution R 2016-024, adopting a donation of vacation leave slash sick leave pool policy as policy number 12?
So moved.
Okay. Made by Mary Ann and seconded by Michelle. Okay, we're now open for discussion. Michelle?
The only question or thought that I had is, is this going to, if you set up a policy like this, is this going to discourage people giving, giving their leave? Because at USA, we could give it to a person. And so if you can't give it to a person, I mean, if, if it's my decision and I don't like you, I don't want you to get my leave, but I like you and I want you, I understand that, but isn't that the person's choice to do with their leave what they want?
Well, yes, we'd have a pool, and so in practice, you would probably say, he'll go sick, and he'll... sick, and Hill needs leave. There's only 10 hours in the pool. We need more hours than anybody want to donate. We do have employees that are in a position where they have a hard time using all their leave, especially the longstanding employees that...
Accumulate so much.
They accumulate a lot. Those are usually the critical positions, and they're professionals, and they, you know, if I, I've heard this before. If I take leave, then I just gotta work that much harder when I get back. So there, I'm sure there are employees that would be, would not be discouraged based upon this, because you can tailor it based upon how many leaves. Hours are there.
And you choose when you give it.
You choose when you give it.
Okay.
So if there's, let's say there's nobody in need for it now, probably there would, it wouldn't come up until the end of the calendar year, when I've got 10 days extra leave, and if I don't, I can't use it, because I physically used it all, I might as well donate it to the pool.
Oh, okay.
So I think you're going to see that in calendar year, at the end of the year. And I think also, you know, Hill gets sick, and he's a good guy. We want to keep him around, but he's got to make a living for his family. And then you'll see, kind of associated with the event, not going to Hill, it goes to the pool. And there are rules for donating, and then there's approval process that is, that's for the leave. You know, you can only, you have to exhaust all your accrued sick vacation leave, holiday time, any other leave. Only qualify for leave if it's the employee or an immediate family member, which is defined, and they have a major health condition. There's a process that must be made in writing, documentation from treating physicians, a maximum of 480 hours per event, which is basically three months. And, you know, the process within 10 days is outlined in there.
Okay. Mary Ann?
My only question was, I think you said you looked at similarly situated cities, and I'm assuming, and this is really my question, I'm assuming esteemed council has signed off on it, and says thumbs up.
Our council? Or, yes, this was vetted through, specifically Dan Santie did a lot of work on this. I'm sure he worked through Charlie. Habib's here. He didn't work on it specifically, but yes, he's cleared it. In fact, they pushed us to go to the pool.
Yeah, I can figure that.
Okay. Anybody else?
One other thing, for the budget, if we're, if we, I didn't think about it, what you just said about, I get to the end of the year, and I've got a bunch of excess, so I go ahead and put it in the pool. Normally, that would just go away. So now, in our budget, we have to reflect more money in that account for that leave, or not?
That's a cool, it's sick leave, so it's not, it's not tied to a specific person, you know, to a person, and we don't pay sick leave out, so I don't...
Not an issue.
I don't believe I'd do any kind of accrual to it, because there's a dollar figure for me to attach. We do an accrual at the end of the year, at the end of 30.
Mic, mic or louder?
No, that's fine.
Accrual at the end of the year, based on vacation, because we do pay that out.
Right, okay.
And it's per person, and whatever their dollar is. Sick's not, sick is not accrued, so.
Okay.
From a budgetary standpoint, this is going to replace salary that would otherwise have been paid to these people.
Anyway.
It's not. They're getting sick leave. They would have gotten salary in this place. We haven't released the person. If we have 29, if we have 49 employees working on staff, and you use this pool, you still have 49 people who are getting paid. We've budgeted in our budget for 49 people.
Except if I...
If you run out of sick leave, you stop getting paid, but...
No, but if I have leave, and I give it to you, and I make $100,000, and you only make $20,000, then that's good for us. But if it's reversed, then it costs us money.
Yeah.
But I guess it doesn't in the long run.
Because we...
But it does.
We budgeted, yeah, from a dollars and sis standpoint, but from a budgetary standpoint, we'd still budgeted for Bill to make, we'd say $100,000. We budgeted for Bill to make $100,000. We gave him some extra days, because other people ponied up those days. And Bill makes exactly the same $100,000 that we had budgeted.
And so we like it that way, from the budget side.
From a budget side, it was easy. From a cash standpoint, we actually did get less cash, but we're providing a community-based program for our employees, to where employees are saying, yeah, we're all in this together.
I'm fine with that. I just want to...
And we like the team aspect of that.
I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure...
But budget side, Laura is exactly right. There's not a number that changes, because everybody's salary was accounted for in that budget process.
Okay.
Yes, budget.
Anybody else got a question or comment? Okay. Which brings us to the motion. Resolution R 2016-024, adopting policy number 12, donation of vacation leave/sick leave policy, pool policy. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6.7, Discussion, Action, Selection of Chauvin Oak Creek subdivision, street sign designed to refurbish. Bill?
So the city of Chauvin Oak Park owns a number of cities, and homeowners associations own a number of other city, uh, street, I'm sorry. City of Chauvin Oak Park owns some streets, homeowners associations own some streets. In the case of Chauvin Oak Creek subdivision, the city of Chauvin Oak Park owns those streets, and subsequently, we're responsible for the street signage. So the picture on the left, there is an example of the signage that exists in Chauvin Oak Creek, and you can see that it's rusting out there, and it's harder to read associated with that. So the signs are in need of refurbishment. As you can see, the signs are fairly unique. Do you have another picture that shows? This is Bentley Manor, which is a little bit different. And then Willowood is a little bit different, and Huntington's even more different. They've got a brown with a yellow. If you could go back one, Curtis. So the signs for Chauvin Oak Creek are made on what I call a unit. The signs are actually welded up to a bracket, and the bracket's got a brace, and the brace actually bolts into the street lamp pole to remove the signs, and they're tailor-made for that. You know, you've got to unbolt the things, and you take the whole unit off, and then you've got to refurbish it as a unit. There's two blades, two sides to each blade, four reflective streets, name strips. And there's approximately 28 signs in Chauvin Oak Creek. So earlier in the budget process, I did have a contractor go out there and take a look at that, make an assessment, provide me a by-sign quote to that. We budgeted $14,000 for the refurbishment of the street signs in Chauvin Oak Creek. That budget quote was based upon this green enamel, basically the same, same design and the same color scheme as it was before. Quotes that I have, I've gone out for five other companies besides that one. I've gotten two other quotes back in. So we're going to be able to do this under budget. All quotes include reflective lettering and lighting associated with that. I know that's been one of the challenges, is being able to read the signs at night. These would have reflective lettering. So during the workshop, when we got consensus to proceed with the refurbishment of that, there were several comments from Alderman that, or, and we didn't really have a law, a discussion associated with this, but there was a discussion, well, this gives us an opportunity to standardize our street signs. And so staff, I didn't feel comfortable moving forward with either proceeding as it is now, and refurbishing it back to existing conditions, making it new, or going to the version on the right. When I look at the version on the right, which is a royal blue color with white lettering, does not seem to match the decor of Chauvin Oak Creek, and would be, you could use the existing signs and do something similar to that, but it wouldn't be exact. So I think I needed, I thought I needed more, you know, rudder, steerage, guidance from council associated with this. So I started looking through this, okay, and I talked to some of the sign companies. Could you put a logo similar to the white box with the blue Road Runner over on, say, Cinnamon Oak 2000 block there, Branch Oak? It's feasible, you could do that. Looking at that and talking with Chauvin Oak Creek, having the white box associated with that would seem to be out of place. I did, we did get drawn to the conclusion that you could, instead of having a white box with a blue Road Runner, you could have a white Road Runner with the city of Chauvin Oak Park established 1956, and you could put that on there as white lettering, and it would be less intrusive associated with that. Then the idea was, but that's not our current logo. Our current logo's on the top left-hand corner there, where you've got the S and a P. So would something like that be more conducive to what we would want to do associated with that? So I did present this to homeowners association in Chauvin Oak Creek. I didn't formally present it, but I coordinated over the last month and a half, two months, associated with that. Their initial response is, they prefer to refurbish it back to the original condition and make it new. Associated with that, they feel like that this is, provides them, you know, that's unique homeowners associating neighborhoods that they moved into. I'm just paraphrasing what they said. They did say that they would consider a logo. They don't, I would say that the box with the blue or a green Road Runner would seem to be out of place, but perhaps, looking at the Road Runner with just a lettering adhesive as a letter, the whole thing might work. But they were reluctant to sign up with that without having seen it. So again, I think there's three courses of action. Refurbish it to match the existing design and colors. I've eliminated the blue from considerations, because I wouldn't recommend that. Refurbish it to match the existing design and add a logo that matches the old signs on Chauvin Oak Park. Or third option, refurbish it, but add a new logo with the green and blue lettering, which, when I look at that, the green lettering will be hard to see against the green black background associated with that. Ultimately, you know, my recommendation is to refurbish it to match the existing design, but to allow the homeowners association to make the final design, on whether a logo should be included or not, based upon a prototype or some sort of example that's provided. I'm sure they're not going to do one and show it what it really looked like. They would just project it. Subject to your questions.
Okay. Do we have a motion concerning the, to refurbish the existing design, and to consider allowing the homeowners association to make a decision concerning the logo on review of prototypes?
So moved.
Okay, Bob has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mary Ann is seconded. We're now open for discussion. I think the first question is, the refurbishment of the existing design, is everybody pretty good with the, they've got their, they've got that color scheme, and they've got that type of design, instead of going in and completely reinventing the will, working with what they have in place? Is everybody kind of okay with that? So that really, we're just talking about, we're not talking about colors, we're not talking about white and green?
Would you let them talk?
Yeah, Mary Ann?
To refurbish, that is the 14K that's been budgeted, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Any of those options are 14? That's why I wanted to ask, for just that?
Just to refurbish and make it look exactly like Chauvin Oak Creek has requested.
Yes.
It's 14K.
And how much are the signs we have on our side?
I don't know.
We should know. Public Works did them. They were in a budget.
I didn't hear the question.
How much it costs to do the signs that we did on our side, which I will say that that Road Runner was never approved by council. The previous mayor picked that out and thought it was cute, and that should not have been our sign or our color.
Okay, thank you very much for that editorial comment. Bill, the question I think that Mary Ann has is, if you added the Road Runner design to it, does that materially change?
No, that's not my question.
No, that's not a question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
My question, my question was, and I think it was answered, 14K, gets these signs, the current Chauvin Oak Creek signs refurbished as is to be updated? I just have a few questions.
Yeah, sure.
I didn't raise my hand first, though.
No, no, I recognized you first.
Okay. Do we have any residents complaining about the Chauvin Oak Creek signs refurbished? Meaning, do we have any people that do not live in Chauvin Oak Creek who are complaining about the signs in Chauvin Oak Creek?
The mayor.
And I don't, I don't mean that...
Because I can't read them at night.
Right. I don't mean because they can't, they need to be refurbished. But if they are refurbished, never mind, it's a hypothetical. Let me go to my next question. This is what Chauvin Oak Creek HOA has asked for, correct? To just refurbish as is?
Yes, I mean, it is, but we, the city approached them initially, associated with that, two years ago. And then over time, the homeowners association now formally then ask us in the budget process to do that. So through that process, and through the staff action associated with that, their current position is, they want it refurbished based upon what it looks like now.
Right.
You know, one other thing I might, I should have mentioned, I didn't. If you put the logo in, then that changes the spacing associated with that, and then the letters will probably become smaller.
Get smaller. Or you take the numbers off.
Or you take the numbers off. We use the numbers based upon the blocks.
Yeah.
And so forth. So there is some consideration that the logo seems like a good idea, but then it really may not work very well on the sign.
Well, this, and this may go to Alderman Ross's question, in probably a roundabout way, as I'm wont to do. Does the city currently have a concrete plan and a budget to create uniform signage across the entirety of the city, and for all of our neighborhoods?
No.
Okay. Does staff have an idea of what that would cost?
It would be infeasible, because the homeowners associations that own the streets have, you know, they control their signage, and we would not be able to enforce our will. Now we could ask them to, but if you take a look at Huntington, they've very, very uniquely tailored their design, their color scheme, associated with the decor that they're trying to communicate across that subdivision.
So we can't really have uniform signage in the city?
Uh-uh.
Right?
No, we may not.
All right.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Bob?
So on the 14K for refurbishing, the shot, those right there, that includes the reflective, the updated reflective lettering as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all included. So I was, I was one of the ones that suggested we try to do that this summer, because I think, you know, we're trying to do a branded campaign for the city, but I don't think that we need to shove something down someone's throat. It sounds like we're not going to be able to do that anyways. But they are unique neighborhoods, and if that's what they choose, if that's what they want, you know, I think, I think, you know, I don't think we can easily go replace every sign in the city. I like the branding campaign that we're doing, but I don't know that, you know, this is where we have to do it. Survey might be great for them to go out to the residents and find out what signs they do like.
Okay. Alan?
Yeah, I sort of have an opposite opinion. If we're paying for it, and we're trying to come up with some sort of branding program, granted, we can't do anything as a city council for Bentley Manor and Huntington. I'll be honest, I don't know whether Will Woods a gated community and, or not, is it? Is Will, okay, so we don't have control over that either. Otherwise, we're just wasting spinning wheels, because, you know, you look at all the other signings, and it doesn't say what block it is. So it was like Huntington doesn't have it, Bentley Manor doesn't have it. Is that really necessary? I'd rather see us put the Chauvin Oak Park final approved logo on it.
Well, I will say, in defense of keeping the numbers on their signs, if you spend a lot of time in Chauvin Oak Creek, which I do with clients, it's a pain in the neck to know what street you're on until you've figured out what the main streets are going through there. So it helps to actually have the sign, the numbers on their signs, whereas the other neighborhoods have been designed in such a way that it's a little easier.
And both of the, I would just say, both of the police officers, the chief here, are shaking their heads, yes, that it's helpful.
I work for no bush on all street signs. Whether you know the streets or not, in an emergency, it helps you to find that. And that's just my opinion, or it's not yours, I mean, I'm sure.
Well, you know, for our side, where the streets are like this, it's a little different. It's that windy thing that... It's that windy thing that-
I even wish it rather on the ones in Chauvin Oak, especially on the north.
Okay. Other points of discussion? Bob?
Well, I think based on what Alan said, we still have the option to go back and refurb it the way we're talking about, but they would consider some sort of logo updating, so.
I think they would consider it. I mean, I think it's, I mean, I, just talking to the homeowners association president, he wasn't opposed to it, but he wanted to kind of look at it a little bit more and put eyes on it before.
Well, I will tell you on the old side, we didn't get to put eyes on it before it was stuck up in our neighborhood, but there.
Alan?
I was just gonna, I forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, yeah, I think we can, if we can keep with the color scheme like they have it, I don't think that's a problem, but can we, you know, put a logo on there that it identifies as a Chauvin Oak Park community?
And I think that maybe the conversation tonight has been that they'd like to see it, get eyes on it, and then they say yea or nay. And I recognize it's, you know, we, we can't do anything uniform because there are several, we, we just can't do it. So i- if, I don't know, if I'm in that neighborhood, I'd like to have a say.
I didn't hear any opposition to the logo. I just heard, well, I'm not sure. And I thought that made sense, especially if you're not talking about putting a white box with, you know, a blue. If you're just looking at putting the logo on itself, it would be less intrusive and it might actually be good.
Or crowded.
Or crowded, so we have to see.
They might have to do the logo in a, you know, stark white or something. I mean, you just may not be able to do the exact colors because of the background color here.
Yeah.
That's acceptable or not, but.
I say just give them some choices and let them look at them and, and they'll let us know what they want.
Well, once they get the choices, you know, I'm, and I, I intend to then, okay, this is what they decided, then I'm gonna go out for, I've got the bids already, then I'll make a decision and then we'll proceed to move forward. So that's where I would see us going from here.
Okay, so, so do I have a replacement motion to instruct the city manager to go back to the homeowners association in Chauvin Oak Creek to offer prototype design alternatives for refurbished machines? I think, I mean, signs. Yes, I'm sorry, machine, machines, the signs, yeah. Yes, sorry about that, yeah.
Yes.
I thought that was a motion.
Okay, we have a, a motion to substitute. And the motion to substitute would provide that the homeowners association, that Bill would be instructed to deliver to the homeowners association new designs that include the Chauvin Oak Park logo on refurbishment of the existing signs. Okay? And Bob has made that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Do we, do we have any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Now we're going to move, now that becomes the primary motion. All in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Bill, if you would go and take care of that for us. Thank you very much. Item seven, city managers report. All materials listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. Does anybody want to pull out any of the items on the city managers' report? Okay, there have been no items to be pulled out. Brings us to item eight. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to approve items eight point one through eight point six and eight point eight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Ross, from Michelle. Do we have a second? Bob has seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Brings us to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Michelle has made the motion and Alan has seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries.